... approximately a week later after the meeting requesting approval to only retain 50 to 150, 50 to 100 feet of the native vegetation instead of the 200. I determined that that would be a substantial change and would need to come back to the Planning Commission. There was not a Planning Commission available, a meeting available in September due to a lack of a quorum, so tonight was the first available meeting. However, on September 7th, staff observed that clearing was occurring within the required 200-foot screening and buffering, even though it was, they were told that they could not do that. That clearing, stop work orders were issued the following day. During that week, there were numerous interactions with the people on site and the contractor on site to try and address the issue to stop work. Unfortunately, work occurred for three or four days that week, citations were issued. We did get them to survey the edge of the actual clearing limits, and that information is in your package, and I'll walk you through that shortly. So this is a unique one. It's kind of a hybrid of a co-compliance violation issue, but it has the ability to ask for an amendment to the approval from the Planning Commission, and that's what they chose to come forward to do. So on September 10th, they submitted the conditional use approval asking, not only to approve the clearing that was done, but to be able to clear an additional 15 to 20 feet further to the north. If you look in your, you have a handout that was given to you tonight, and if anybody wants to see it, there are copies on the back, on the board. What this is, is it's an aerial photograph showing the first part of the week, the clearing that doesn't reflect what's actually occurred on the site by the end of the week. But we overlaid the approved clearing limit on there, the actual edge of clearing, which is in red, the approved clearing's in green with C's, and then the northernmost line that's in blue with C's is what they're asking for approval with their amendment tonight. You also have additional comparisons in your package on page 25 that show you the same thing, the clearing that was approved with conditional use 2106, the clearing that actually occurred during that first week in September. And then the third one to the right in blue shows what they're asking. All of it to be left cleared and clear additionally with the replacement or with the proposal of a berm. And there's. The berm, sorry. I thought I had it written down. So if you look on page 66 in your package, it's an 11 by 17, you can see where they indicate where the proposed berm would be. You can also see it as a squiggly black line on the aerial photo that's in your handout. So between the two, you can see where they are proposing that berm to go. And the drawing on page 66 also shows you a cross-section of how the berm will be reconstructed. It'll be a 3 to 1 slope on the southern side, a berm with a 2 to 1 slope tying back into the clearing limits or to the current cleared area. The indication is, is that it would be a maximum of 15-foot high, the berm, and as shown, you can see the existing elevations and the proposed elevations on that drawing. So in your package, you also have photographs that show the clearing on the site. You have additional aerial photographs of the site initially in your package, and then beginning on page 31, you actually see ground-level photos of the clearing. So the purpose of screening and clearing according to the code is to minimize or eliminate adverse impacts between adjoining uses and intended to protect the lower intensity use from the higher intensity use and provide aesthetically attractive barrier between the uses. It's intended, it shall function to reduce or eliminate incompatibility between uses such that long-term continuation of either use is not threatened by impacts from the other. The landscaping purpose in 1633 also talks about the requirement for screening and buffering between incompatible land uses and that you're supposed to preserve existing vegetation to the greatest extent practical. So there are three criteria, general approval criteria, that have to be addressed that deal with screening and buffering and these impacts to the residents to the north. Criteria number 13, criteria number 14, and criteria number 15. You can see those in the staff report in your package. They're on pages 18 and 19. You'll have the findings there. Basically, they reiterate that the proposal that was proposed to be allowed to clear even more and just do the berm is not consistent with those criteria. However, there are two options in your package for consider, that staff's bringing forward for consideration to mitigate this clearing that has occurred on the site. On page 22 in the staff report is the option number, or page 21 is option number one. That one, obviously, it iterates that, reiterates that you have all the other conditions of approval remain in effect. It again says modifications have to be reviewed. The second condition is that they submit an updated clearing grading, drainage, site, and landscape plans that show the 15, minimum 15-foot tall berm with a 3 to 1 and 2 to 1 slope as shown on the grading plan, and gives a deadline for that. The third condition is that parking lot lighting fixtures must be shielded to prevent glare, and they need to have an auto dim function to reduce the lighting level when the restaurant is closed. And the fourth one is that outdoor entertainment events are limited to weekends with hours no later than 10:00 PM. Any other events would need review and approval just as any other temporary use within the city to make sure that there wouldn't be undue negative impacts on the residents to the north. Option number two, remove some of those conditions, still retains, oh, the one thing I didn't mention, the berm would only be grassed in option number one. And option number two, the same first condition about substantial changes or changes to the plan. The second one includes the berm with the 3 to 1 and 2 to 1 slopes, but it requires submittal of a revegetation plan that includes trees and vegetation of a similar type and density that existed prior to clearing. Any replacement trees have to be eight feet and grouped in space to create the previous screening and buffering effect and supplemented with native shrubs and grasses, and the shrubs have to be two feet tall. And then the parking lot lighting fixtures would still need to be shielded but would not need the auto dim. Now, I just want to briefly call out a couple pictures in your package that show you the impact to the vegetation. It's on page 33 and 30, 33 through 36. On 33, this is standing up in that northern portion of the lot facing north. You can see how you can already see daylight through the trees. This is without any additional clearing, but they're proposing an extra 15 to 20 feet, which would take you even deeper. If you turn to the next page, it zooms in a little bit closer, and you can see how thin that vegetation already is. And that's the reason for staff requesting or recommending option number two, which requires replanting of trees. The buffer alone, depending on that topography and that height, won't mitigate all the impacts from noise and light from this large-sized restaurant with a large parking lot with lighting. So you can see those pictures there. Starting on 37, you can see the extent of the clearing that occurred. The blue circles indicate the survey stakes, which was the approved clearing limits. Everything to the right of that, which is to the north, shows the area that was cleared contrary to their approval. Next one is just another one showing facing to the west. And as you go through the series, 39 shows you what some of the existing vegetation looked like that's retained right at the edge of that clearing that they've done to You can see on page 43, you can see how that's opened up. That's standing inside what remains looking back south to the development site. And then if you backtrack to 42, you'll see the clearing if you're looking from the west to the east that occurred. So there's a series of photos that show you what it's, the site looks like now. Again, just to be clear, it could have been dealt as a co-compliance issue with a compliance plan, but again, the conditional use can also be amended. So staff is recommending approval of an amendment, and staff still supports the original uses that were proposed for this site. However, because of that clearing that occurred and that impact of that screening and buffering, which is necessary to mitigate those impacts, recommending approval of option two. And again, that's the berm with the additional plantings that are on it. You can see in the aerial photos, the type of vegetation was on that site. You can see there was a significant number of trees. Yes, there were open spaces. Most of the vegetation is about four feet tall when I was walking the site. The ground-level vegetation of the trees, again, were mature 50, 60, 40-foot trees, with a combination of smaller and taller ones through in there, throughout there. So it's, it's something that can be addressed, but in staff's opinion, it needs to be addressed, and that screening and buffering needs to be put back in place. You do have two comments in your package from residents in opposition. One indicated that they were in favor. I believe that's the extent of what I have. You have two options in your package. You have option number one, a resolution written as option number one. It's on page 109 through 121 in the packet. You have option number two on pages 123 through 135. Again, staff is recommending approval of option two. And certainly, the Planning Commission can come up with an option three or modify any of the two options that you have in front of you. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, the goal is just to mitigate the, the impact that has occurred and allow the project to move, continue to move forward.
Do any of the commission members have any questions for the city planner?
Yes, I have one. So how close would, if they, we decided to let them clear, finish clearing out the whole 200 feet, how close would that be to that residence that's sitting on the north end?
If you look at the aerial in front of you, it actually doesn't have the lot line, but on this aerial right here, this would be the, the remaining 100 feet. They're not asking for that. They're asking to, to keep what they have, which is, they've encroached 100 feet so far, basically, into what was required, and they want to encroach another 20 feet. Right at the edge of this tree line that's shown on the aerial is the lot line. So you can see where the home sits and where the vegetation is.
And this one here shows it. Page, uh, oh, it's not a page, it was one of the supplements.
It was the handout that I gave out tonight.
Okay, I see what you're seeing here.
So all of the trees that are left between that clearing line and the homes are all on the site that's under review tonight. So the home itself does not have any trees, except for just some decorative trees left.
Commissioner Bushnell here. Ms. Crawford, is there, on what page was there a, showing the elevation changes between the two properties? Oh, here we go. I think I found it, 66?
Yeah, 66.
So in looking, I'm looking at this, but in, is there much of a grade change going back towards those houses? Is there, 'cause I, and I looked like there was a natural berm going up towards the back of the lot, but, so once this berm goes into effect, you're, we're saying a 15-foot minimum berm height. From what grade?
Well, what they're showing on that, that cross-section, which is in the middle of the, cutting through the middle of the site, so if you're on page 66, you'll see there's an A on the left and an A on the right, all the way at the southern end, all the way at the northern end, and then there's a straight line running right through the site. That's where the cross-section occurs. And then they show on the cross-section, they actually show, based on the topography, that it seems to match what's on the burrows. I'm not sure where they obtained theirs, but it seems to match that. The existing topography that was there before the clearing is with a dashed line. The solid line is what they proposed to, to have at the end of the site construction, the finished elevation. So you can see that there was another ridge up as you went, got closer to the house, as you go further north. So that berm's gonna provide anywhere between 15, 10 to 15 feet height, depending on where you are on the site, and the topography tends to slope to the side, meaning it's higher on the western end and then drops lower on the eastern end. The applicant would need to, I guess, clarify if they're intending for the berm and the 3 to 1 slope to be evenly constructed at the same elevation all the way across the width of the lot. That was something I wasn't sure of myself. The way that it's written, that's, would be the understanding of what would be constructed.
Okay, it looks like the tapos that they superimposed here create some type of consistency on the upper portion of the drawing on 66. We can, we can address that with them. And can you explain the landscaping for the option number two, as far as when the tree replanting? Is that going to be in, along the top of the berm, in the, to the front of the berm to catch the noises? It's going up that way. What, what's the, I assume there's gonna have to be a landscape plan, but you've discussed this with them. Do we have an idea of what, do they have an idea of what you're looking for?
Well, what the condition states is between that red line that shows the edge of the clearing and the clearing limits that they were approved for, which is the green line, this is on the handout, within that area, you, that's where you would do the replantings.
Okay.
So it would be the entire area.
Okay.
Again, you can see from the aerial photographs, the trees weren't packed totally, you know, completely tight. In your package, it's not quite as clear there, but you can see from the aerial, the site was fully vegetated. So again, it, it's gonna have to have some spacing, and there'll be time for it to grow back in, and that's, again, why we went with the 10-foot trees and the shrubs, but, or the 8-foot.
8-foot.
8-foot trees. It'll take time. The berm will help offset it until the vegetation comes back in.
Okay. Do any of the commission members have any other questions for the city planner at this time?
None at this time. No further questions at this time?
Commissioner Rubio?
No further questions at this time.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a presentation regarding their proposed, proposed request at this time?
I'm Tim Alley, representing the Nanez family and the project for the conditional use permit amendment here. As Tina pointed out, we are looking to amend the conditional use permit as approved to clear a little bit, an additional portion of the property and place a berm there. The main reason for this approach is to help save some costs for the project. There's a lot more unusable material for structural areas than we were anticipating. So in order to help, help the budget, project budget with material prices being as high as they are and other impacts, we, we're proposing that for, location for them to, to put that material. There is some long-term planning that the family was considering using that portion of the property for, so there, and that would be another permit application at that time. Don't want to go into that much. Now, I'll hit on that again in a second here. But, but so there is a possibility that, you know, that would be removed in the future. Sounds like with the way things are going, that might not be something that they'll be able to do, but I'll, I'll hit on that again, like I said, later. So we, we put, I put together a new plan showing the grading of the berm. That is 15 feet above the original ground topo. The ground does slope from west to east, so the berm would follow that slope, and that's to make sure it catches within the property limits. The, I, I've looked through the, the options that Tina's put in for the conditions of approval. My question, I guess, is, and I realize that they're, they're proposing concert venue here. We already have that on the very south end of the property with the building between it, and there's a grade rise that goes across the property as well. So as you move away from right away, the property's, the topography is climbing up to the building, the building's at a high point, and it drops back away, and then climbs back up at the backside of the property. So there's a lot of topography there to help with the noise payment. When we put the application together, the, the initial application, we had 200 feet left of untouched trees there. Again, there was, is talk with family of possible development in that area, but that was what, we didn't, you know, we had enough parking area that, that's what the extent of the north, the, the north boundary there was for. That did leave 200 feet behind, but from what I could see in the code, we were, you know, for a commercial lot of budding residential properties, we're only required to have a 16-foot type B buffer with a 6-foot-high opaque fence or berm. And that, again, if we had, you know, tried to develop all that area. So, you know, we, we had 200 feet, we have 113 feet in the proposed for this application. I don't know, you know, at what point is it as enough, enough, I guess? That's seven times the requirement from the code, though, at least the way I understand it. So there's that, you know, there's still quite a bit of trees there. We're also proposing a 15-foot maximum berm is what I put in there because there's, you know, a potential, there's not quite as much material as I think there is there. That being said, if we have to go to 15-foot minimum, we can look at that and, and see if we can make that happen. I'm sure we can find some material to, to build it up that high. But I'd like to also point out, you know, you have a 13-acre parcel next to it, and if we, if we're being held to 113 feet of a, of an existing tree buffer, are you gonna hold them to that? I mean, we're already, you're already, that's, on, on the Nanez's property, there's already acre there that now sounds like they're not gonna be able to develop at all, to have to be, retain, you know, existing vegetation. Obviously, you know, we can adjust that with the planning commission at a later date, but it's also setting some precedence for that neighboring property that they're gonna have to keep 100-plus feet of trees against that property. Just, just something that kind of seems like it's a little excessive, I suppose. I mean, I know that the, there's often concerts right down here, the, the park here, there's not a whole lot of buffering between, you know, the tree, the neighboring residents there. So, I mean, we've already, yeah, again, we've, we've provided quite a bit of separation distance between their concert venue and the, the properties to the north. That, I suppose, you know, you look at it from a sound issue, and you look at it from a visual light issue. We'd be more than happy to put blinders or screening on the lights, dim them. It makes sense to try and reduce the impact. But that there, even if you were to take away, you take away the concert portion of the thing, and you're left with a commercial development, and if you want to look, consider the concert as being, you know, an additional use that may, might require a little bit more buffering. Again, we're all the way at the front, but then if you look at it from the lighting standpoint, you would go to the code for that and, and be at that, again, that 16-foot buffer plus your 16, 6-foot opaque, you know, wall or berm. So our lights aren't abnormally high. I believe they were 20, 20-foot poles. It's also, again, gonna be a low point in the, in the, on the site, being in the parking lot drops away as you go to the north. So the total distance in the low point in the drive, in the parking lot to the top of that berm is roughly about 25 feet, and that's taller than any of the lights we have. So the top of the lights are gonna be pretty close, if not underneath the top of that berm, trying to help with some of that light mitigation as well. But as we discussed, you know, there's a possibility that they'll be coming back to the planning commission for future development of the property, so. And then I'd like to address the, the code compliance issue there as well. There's a couple of things that are, that happened that I just really ended up in a, in a communication issue. I approached Tina about the additional clearing around August 17th. I emailed her, and then we, I talked to her on the phone. She said that they would require going back to the planning commission, but she also did say that I could talk to Archie, the public works director, to possibly, you know, consider the engineering quote-unquote behind the berm and whether or not it's gonna do what we would like it to do, and that he could overrule her decision there. Archie was out of the office at the time. She, he was coming back on August 30th. So on August 30th, I called and left him a voicemail requesting that we be able to clear. The 31st, I received the call that morning, and he said, "Yeah, that sounds great. Go ahead and do it." Very shortly after that, he, he said, "No, wait, we, you do need to go back to the planning commission." So I went with Peter Frank with Portide to Archie's office, and when we left that meeting, we had an understanding that we could clear, we still needed to put in a permit application, but it's kind of at risk, basically. Then the following week would have been, September 7th, is when we got the stop-work order. So again, possible lack of communication, kind of heard what we wanted to hear, but we, we had, it kind of had been under the impression that we could proceed with this. That being said, the, there's also the issue of, of a violation, and that, I can't speak to you real, real well, 'cause I wasn't on the site when it happened, but from what I, from talking to the contractor, what I understand is that they had dug, began to dug, dig into the area, they had cleared some more. They had a very deep depression pit because they were pulling material, better material that's deeper down out, and they were gonna put this, the more high-silt material that is unsuitable for structural areas back in there. They continued to work in there to try to reduce the hazard of the depth of their excavation, and that is what was going on when they, they were issued the violation. So that, that's what my understanding is of it, but again, I, yeah, I think that pretty much hits on everything I wanted to say there.
Okay. So what we'll do now is we will open this up to public testimony, people that want to speak for or against the project or the expansion change of the project. At that point in time, we'll get, have you come back up to rebut or enhance anything that was said, and then at that point in time, if the commissioners have any questions, we'll, we'll ask those questions, okay?
That's good.
Thank you. Public comment portion of the public hearing is now open for conditional use 21 dash 07. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? You'll have five minutes to provide your comments. Please come forward, write your name down, and speak your name into the microphone for the record and whether or not you live inside the city limits.
Good evening. My name is Ken Anderson, and I live inside the city limits. I'm one of the three residential properties that actually is adjacent to this operation. So over the past month, the clearing has gotten amazingly clear on the backside of our property. The trees that they've cleared has provided a lot of extra noise, a lot of extra dust that comes through at us. We've lived there for six or seven years now, me and my family, and have regarded our backyard as kind of a very beautiful, naturistic place where we live inside the city limits and we don't have any worries, but now that it's been cleared beyond where it should have been cleared, we're left with this huge hole in our backyard. We have trees, but as the fall comes through here and takes away all of our leaves, the daylight increases dramatically. We can see sunlight through the trees where we never have seen them before. So my concern really is just, I would like the trees replaced up to where they were not supposed to be taken from, and the berm is fine, but the trees need to be replaced so that the berm berm is fine, but the trees need to be replaced so that the berm could dissipate over time. You know, the trees will grow up and provide that wonderful block that we prefer on that south side of our house. The bedroom window that we have looks straight into that opening, so it's, every night, it's one of those eyesores that you just kinda like, "Oh, I wish they would've done what they were supposed to do." Once I was sent the, uh, pamphlet that tells me that I can come and visit you guys and talk to my story, it said that they were not supposed to clear, but they did anyways because of a misunderstanding, it sounds like. Um, and what's the big deal is happiness. It really boils down to, it's, it's a beautiful place to live. I love Wasilla, um, and you guys are shaving away layers of happiness one tree at a time. May not sound very, uh, important, but to the happiness of my family and the others who live in our subdivision, it's quite important. It, uh, improves our, our quality of life. Um, the noise is also a concern because the, uh, clearing process has gotten closer and closer, and we can hear with all of our windows closed, with all of our doors closed, we can feel the ground shaking as they rip trees out of the ground, as they knock all the vegetation down that they weren't supposed to, which, yeah, well, so, uh, it's, it's noise, it's not so much light, but it's kind of a whole combination of the, of the group that we just want put to the way that it was supposed to be in the original 200-foot buffer. For reasons that I don't know, I wasn't there for that part of it, but it affects me and my family and the neighbors that I live with. So, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward and testify at this time? Mr. Anderson, was, did you also provide a, a written comment, or is that somebody, that was somebody else? Okay, just making sure. All right, with nobody further wishing to speak, the public portion of the public hearing is now closed. Um, does, would the applicant like to come forward, or applicants' represent, representative come forward and, um, provide any further response, and then I'm sure some of the commissioners will have some questions.
Uh, yes, Tim Ali again. Um, I, it's always, uh, you know, difficult to, uh, address neighbors' concerns, uh, such as that. Um, but ultimately, um, I mean, the property is owned by the Nannes's, um, and there is, you know, code requirements that they have to meet in order to buffer themselves by, from, from the adjacent properties. Um, I understand that what was being left was 200 feet. Again, that was far above what is required by the code. Um, and, you know, again, the property next door, 13 acres of untouched raw land, uh, I imagine the city would like to have, you know, being commercial property, they'd like to have it probably get developed at some point or another. Um, and with that in mind, you know, again, do we, is it 113 feet, or is it a type B buffer with, with screening and, you know, um, and, yeah.
Do any of the commission members have any questions from Mr. Ali?
What does the code specifically require in footage?
When I, when I looked into it, um, for commercial property against residential, it was a type B buffer, which is 16 feet with a six, six-foot-tall opaque berm or fence. Um, and then the setback requirement does go up to 30 feet from those law lines. That, that was my understanding.
I got a ques- specific question coming. Commissioner Bushnell here for, I'm gonna ask her this question. Um, not going into the, the zoning of just a typical, but does the concert venue itself change the use of the property in such a way that would change? Was that the consideration for the 200-foot buffer? Because I don't remember the 200-foot buffer being a real issue in the conversation of this. It was more of everything else. It was just kinda there?
It was in the findings of fact.
Okay.
For the compatibility and for the buffering and the screening that's required. So, the, those criteria, 13, 14, and 15, in the original approval said specifically, due to the preservation of the 200 feet, all the proposed uses could occur without creating negative, undue negative impact on the residences to the north. So, it was tied to that from staff's recommendation, and it is in the approval.
Okay.
And I do wanna specifically answer Commissioner Seals, if you allow me to. Um, what the code says for the buffers, says where buffering is required, the following buffer types define the minimum width and plants. So, you have to deal with the scale of the operation, the intensity of the use, and the potential for negative impacts on the adjoining residential uses, and the code specifically authorizes staff and the planning commission to add additional requirements above and beyond the minimums. Sometimes the minimums are sufficient, sometimes they're not.
Fair enough. Uh, Commissioner Bushnell here. Uh, Mr. Ali, I had a, a question about the berm versus a tree, in addition to the trees versus not, versus the natural vegetation that was there. Um, and I understand from the, the public testimony, Mr. Anderson, there is a concern of sightlines and things like that, and that will happen as trees come and go and die, and I understand that, and I, I do understand his concerns. From a noise factor, um, with the berm, um, using, um, your expertise as far as design and things like that, what assurances or what, um, not assurances, confidence would you have that the option that the city planner is proposing with landscaping and the berm will be at least equal, if not better than what, is, is it gonna be as good as what the natural trees were there before?
I would say with, yeah, it would definitely be better. I'd say even just having the berm there is gonna be better. It's the solid, from what I understand, uh, there's only about 20 trees removed from that, the area that has been cleared. Um, there'll be stuff, a few more. There's about 20 trees and, and some bushes. Um, there, with berm being 15 feet high, it's also, uh, about, it might be about 30 feet, 25 feet taller than where the concert venue's at. So, I mean, yeah, and plus the building between it, I mean, you got a lot of things that are planned to, uh, affected that there. Um, the other side of things is, again, you know, neighbors, if they clear, you know, it's a pretty narrow lot. Berm will probably protect what's directly behind, um, but if anything gets cleared left or right of it, which would be the same with the trees as well. Um, but, uh, but having a big solid mass of, of earth there, uh, definitely helped damper it. Probably would, uh, reflect some of it, so, you know, having some vegetation on it would probably help.
Okay. Do any of the commis-, other commission members have any other questions? Commissioner Rubio?
I do not at this time.
Mr. Sageal?
No questions at this time.
No further questions at this time.
Anybody have any further questions for the city planner? Hearing none. Thank you. Now, I'll need a motion to either approve or deny conditional use permit 21 dash 07. And to, so we have to have a motion to enter into either one, either one of the, um, items. It would have to be motioned and seconded, or it doesn't go anywhere.
Does that open it to option one and two?
Correct. Unless you wanna write option three?
No. Mr. Commissioner Seals, I make a motion that we, um, go into discussion with 2107.
I'm gonna need something a little bit more, do you know which, uh, hold on a second.
What page you looking at?
Are you wanting to make a motion to address option number one or option number And one thing I will say is if we're gonna make a motion to approve either one option or one, to make sure you're in favor of it before you make the motion.
Commissioner Sageal, I make a motion we discuss option number two. That's not what you're looking for.
I, I need a, a motion, um, no, that's not good enough. I need a motion that says that we're gonna approve one of the options, or deny, actually, what I would prefer to see a, 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 a motion in the affirmative of the full option one or full option two on the record, and then we can get, if we get a second, and then, as a matter of course, we'll go into discussion and whether or not we'll approve it or not.
Okay. Commissioner Sageal, I make a motion that we approve option number two and disapprove option number one.
Okay. So, just go into
Can, can I?
Approving the resolution, and then you discuss option one or two, and then you make an amendment to adopt one or the other.
Is that what you would like to make a motion to, Commissioner Sageal?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, all right. We'll go, we'll go that route. That's a little unorthodox, but we'll go that route. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Resolution number, the title, please.
Sure. So, the motion on the table, as I understand it, is a motion to approve Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution serial number 21, 21 dash 10. Option one or two, a resolution of Wasilla Planning Commission amending the conditional use permit of 21 dash 06. Is that, so you want the whole thing? Okay. Um, "For a 10,000-square-foot restaurant with an outdoor dining and entertainment area for the special events to add conditions of approval necessary to mitigate the impacts from the unpermitted clearing of approximately 90 feet of existing mature native vegetation that was required to be retained to provide adequate screening, buffering between the restaurant and the residential homes to the north. Track 3A Pioneer, overlook resubdivided." Is that the motion that we?
Uh, that's not the right one.
Yeah, it is. It's option two.
Oh, okay, then.
Yeah, they're both, they're both the same wording.
Okay, so, that's the motion, correct, as stated?
Yes.
And we had a second by Commissioner Seals.
That's correct.
Is there, um, we have a, a motion and a second on the table, so let's, uh, start with discussion, since, uh, Commissioner Sageal started this. Uh, go ahead.
Um, leaning toward option number two because, like I said, back in August, we had approved it with the 200-foot buffer, and I understand it was some miscommunication, but to just go ahead and start clearing that, and then based on Mr. Anderson's, um, testimony concerning the noise issue and the view and so forth, uh, I think we should consider option number two.
All right. Commissioner Rubio, your, your comments, concerns?
I'm leaning towards option two at this point, too, but just wondering, I'm trying to go back in the notes, actually, to see, we approved, I guess I'm not understanding what we approved on that first meeting.
The first meeting, we approved the original landscaping plan, site development plan, which would've included the 200-foot buffer. I'm not sure if you, were, were you here for, for that meeting?
I think that's the one I missed, actually.
Okay. Yeah, so the, um, so the drawings, the probably the most important one, like the handout that's done, uh, the one you got in the email this afternoon that shows the, um, the area clean, cleared, um, with the Cs in the square, that is what was originally approved. So, kind of a bracketed square, um, rectangular line there, and then it shows to kinda where they did clear, and then it shows that, uh, the berm line that's there. So, what we approved would, they've gone about 100 and, I think the, the thing in here said 113 feet past, um, where they were supposed to, or approximately 100 feet, roughly. So, for discussion, one of my concerns, and it's one of the reasons why I asked the question, is, is there, is the science there to create a landscape, that buffer? I know that when you create the upward buff, and the buffer that slopes upward, as the way it will do, it will deflect noise, um, upwards and over, um, the, the adjoining properties, as, as Mr. Ali said, for the home directly behind him. It won't, it won't help the homes that are off to the side should those, those property lines get cleared, um, because then the noise would, would come through, but at least the property directly behind would have that. Um, and, and we've seen that in other developments around the country. Um, and we see that in, in other different types of things, and I've noticed that in, in other things, um, of developments, where how, how noise carries or doesn't carry depending on what's around it. Um, I think the solution of moving forward with the option number two, putting the trees in a proper landscape plan, which is going then to create the same, um, density and potentially maybe a little bit more density of that ground cover to stop the noise at that lower level that those trees and the brush and the things like that would've covered. Um, I think that's an important aspect of it in order to protect, um, the neighborhood to, um, the north. And also to, um, I think that's an option as far as the city planning, um, office goes, as far as to, um, a good settlement, it not, not to take the least, the least path of resistance and just put the berm there and let it go, but to put something that will look good, um, and it will look good from the, the site, too, not just having a big grass berm there. Um, it will have development on it, plants, trees, bushes, things like that. So, I, I think that is, well, may not seem like the optimum sense, but will probably in the long run look a lot better than the trees originally would've. Um, knowing, knowing the birch trees and things like around here, eventually they would've, they could've naturally thinned over time anyways. Um, and in this new berm and, and development trees may, may over time actually be the better answer for the development than leaving that natural vegetation. That's my, my opinion in, in looking at it, and that's why I asked the question of Mr. Ali, um, based on his professional opinion, if that was gonna at least be equal, if not better than what the natural trees are. So, that, that's, that's where my thoughts are going.
I concur with those thoughts, and, uh, over time, that the 200-foot wide forest is going to change.
So, at this point in time, um, I would need an amendment on which, um, option to, um, finish this motion with, because it's kind of open-ended. Commissioner Sageal, would you like to amend your original motion?
Okay, do I have to read the whole thing again, or?
No, you do not.
Okay. Commissioner Sageal, make it, um, make a motion that we adopt option number two concerning, um, 21 dash 10.
Is there a second?
Before the, the, the commission votes, I just noticed there was, this is the city attorney speaking. Uh, in the title of the resolution, I think that there was a typo on the second line. I just didn't want that to get missed. I think it should be 21 oh seven, not 21 oh six.
I, I, yeah, I did read that into the record, and I, that, okay, thank you.
It is actually correct. You are amending 21 oh six.
Oh, I am, okay.
You are, 'cause
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
This new resolution and this new conditional use will amend the original.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment?
Commissioner Seals seconds.
Okay. Um, not gonna go into discussion on the amendment, but I would like the clerk to take a roll call vote for the amendment.
Commissioner Sageal?
Aye.
Commissioner Seals?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubio?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Aye. The amendment to the motion carries, so the motion is now revised to be a motion to approve Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution serial number 21 dash 10, a resolution of Wasilla Planning Commission amending the conditional use permit 21 dash 06 for a 10,500- Planning Commission amending the conditional use permit 21-06 for a 10,500-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining and entertainment area for special events to add conditions of approval necessary to mitigate the impacts from the under, unpermitted clearing of approximately 90 feet of existing mature native vegetation was required to be retained to approve the adequate screening buffering between restaurant and the residential homes to the north. Track A Pioneer Overlook resubdivided, option two. So at this point in time, is there any further discussion? Sorry. Okay, upon hearing no further discussion, could the clerk please take a roll call vote on the amendment, on the motion as amended?
Commissioner Sejal?
Aye.
Commissioner Seals?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubio?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Aye. Wassila Planning Commission has approved Resolution Serial Number 21-10, a resolution of Wassila Planning Commission amending the conditional use permit, number 2106, for the 10,500-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining and entertainment area for special events to add conditions of approval necessary to mitigate the impacts from the unpermitted clearing of approximately 90 feet of existing mature native vegetation that was required to be retained to provide adequate screening buffering between the restaurant and the residential homes to the north. Track 3A Pioneer Overlook, R. Speaking. Mrs. Crawford, would you like to present item number two?
Certainly. Again, for the record, Tina Crawford, city planner. Item number two on your agenda is conditional use permit number 21-08 with the associated resolution 21-11. The applicant is Tim Ali with the, excuse me, the Butte Company. The property owner is Sun Mountain Development Group, LLC. The proposal is an amendment to the deadline for installation of the required perimeter landscaping for the shops at Sun Mountain Development to extend it from summer 2021 to summer 2022. This was a condition of approval that's been extended over time in conditional use permits 1801, 1901, 1902, and 2007. The property is located generally at the northeast corner of East Sun Mountain Avenue and South Manny Drive. Approximately 20 acres, zone commercial. This request, again, was originally approved in 2018. It had a requirement for perimeter landscaping, and the site was being developed in phases. And I think there was initially an oversight on realizing they only had one year to put the landscaping in. So then they caught that, in 2019, they asked for an extension. And then, again, in 2020, they asked for an extension. If I recall correctly, it was based on COVID issues and plant availabilities and things like that. And so they are, were not able to put in the landscaping you have in your package. The narrative from the applicant, again, stating the difficulties in identifying plans, and they're asking for another one-year extension for installation of landscaping. So, staff is, you have a resolution recommending approval. The conditions are that it changes the landscaping deadline to 2022, and then it notes that all other conditions of approval in the previous approvals remain in effect. And in your package, you have the zoning map, the aerial map, you have a series starting on 149 through 155 or 156, delineating the areas in orange that are the, the areas that have not been planted yet on the site. Some of them have, a few of the areas have them along the street. But like I said, these drawings delineate the perimeter landscaping that is still yet to be planted on the site. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, do any of the commission members have any questions at this time for the city planner?
Commissioner Sejal, none at this time.
Commissioner Rubio, none at this time.
Commissioner Seals, none at this time.
All right, would the applicants represented like to come forward and make a presentation?
Hello, this is Tim Ali with Butte Company. We are requesting another extension to the conditional use permit for the shops at Sun Mountain to extend the landscaping period. One more time, this one is, while they saw the issues with the materials on the upfront side of things, they also had other developments that were interested, they were trying to wrap everything in together as far as financing goes, as a phase gets developed, they put in landscaping for it. They've had several developers kind of not pull out, but just hold tight for the time being, just due to unknown market conditions. One of those being the Home Two Suites, which was a good portion of, of that, and the other one being another possible restaurant that they, we, we still are going to bring forward, a CUP amendment. And then also a, a retail facility shop that would have gone kind of the northwest corner of the property. Again, yeah, those, those got pushed off. Because they got pushed off, it made their financing a little bit difficult with the bank, just because then the bank doesn't know what's going on, just draws things out. And so they are working on getting, securing a loan right now, should be finalized in November, that will cover the cost of the landscaping, and then they're going to get going on it as soon as they can in the spring. So, I do not, I do not anticipate another, another extension at this point, other than that there is, I believe the conditional approval was July, so one way or another, I will be back here to either tell you guys it's done, or be looking for an extension to continue their work to get it done. But talking to the developer, they are trying to get everything lined up for the spring to get things moving forward.
Thank you, sir. We'll open it up to public testimony, see if anybody wishes to come forward and speak on this item. No, silent observers. All righty. And seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public testimony and ask the applicant to come back forward, see if the commission members have any questions. Do any of the commission members have any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Sejal, no questions.
Commissioner Rubio, no questions.
Commissioner Seals, no questions.
Commissioner Bushnell here. Sure you want to go on the record saying there's not going to be another extension?
I was trying to say that I do not foresee another extension.
Okay.
I'm going to push them as hard as I can, make sure it happens.
Fair enough.
I don't want to come back in here and ask you guys for another one, honestly.
I know, the last one wasn't that friendly.
No, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I'm trying to make sure this happens, and we're, we'll, okay, it'll get done one way or another.
Okay, thank you, sir. May I have a motion from one of the commissioners to move this project forward?
Commissioner Seals, Wassila Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 20. I make a motion?
To approve.
Wassila Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 2021 AM, a resolution of the Wass-
No, no, no. It's 21-11.
Okay.
This one?
21. Here, give me that. Commissioner Seals, I make a motion to approve the Wassila Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 21-11, a resolution of the Wassila Planning Commission approving and an amendment to the deadline for installation of the required perimeter landscaping for the shops at Sun Mountain Development from summer 2021 to summer 2022. Condition of approval in conditional use permits 18-01, 19-01, 19-02, and 20-07 for the shops at Sun Mountain condominium plat.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Rubio, second.
Thank you. Discussion? Is there any discussion on this item?
Commissioner Sejal, no.
Commissioner Seals, none at this time.
Commissioner Rubio?
Commissioner Rubio, none at this time.
Okay, then could I have the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Sejal?
Aye.
Commissioner Seals?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubio?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Aye. Wassila Planning Commission approves Resolution Serial Number 21-11, a resolution of the Wassila Planning Commission approving an amendment to the deadline for installation of the required perimeter landscaping for the shops at Sun Mountain Development from the summer of 2021 to the summer of 2022. Condition of approval, conditional use permits 18-01, 19-01, 19-02, and 20-07 for the shops at Sun Mountain condominium plat. Mrs. Crawford, would you like to bring forward item number three?
Um, certainly. Resolution Serial Number 21-12.
Wait, hold on a second.
Can we get a short recess?
No? Yes, we'll take, it's 7:16, we'll take a four-minute break. All righty, we're going to bring the planning commission back to order at 7:19. Mrs. Crawford, would you please bring forth item number three?
I'm sure. Item number three is Resolution Serial Number 21-12. It's a resolution of the Wassila Planning Commission supporting the development of two additional softball fields, and additional parking at Bumpus Ballfields Complex, Section 5 Township 17 North Range 1 West, Lot B5. The Parks and Rec Commission, you have in your package their resolution of approval supporting the ball fields. The code requires any recommendation from the Parks and Rec Commission to come to the planning commission first, the planning commission's then to make a recommendation to the city council. So the resolution in front of you is drafted in the, supporting the ball fields. I understand that someone is here from Parks and Rec Commission to speak.
Matsui Softball Association.
Okay, that's mine. Yeah, someone, someone here that can speak.
All right.
Okay, not Parks and Rec, but from the Softball Association.
All right. Thank you, sir. If you please come forward, state your name for the record, and I am, do we need him to sign in?
Mm-hmm.
And please sign in for the record.
Good evening. My name is Greg DeArmond, and I'm with the Matsui Softball Association. And obviously, I'm here to address the planning commission about adding some, two additional ball fields at the Bumpus Softball Complex, and also additional parking. You know, currently, we operate a four-field facility, and we have parking adjacent to the road, and our softball community has continued to grow as, as the Matsui community has grown, and we've kind of exceeded our, our limits as far as we have more teams and, and that, that are calling for the addition of a couple of ball fields, and we've always kind of needed more parking, especially when we host tournaments in the summertime, and tournament participants are parking alongside the road, and quarter-mile, half-mile each way down from the opening, the driveway, and, and as well, parking across the street. So, with the land that's available to the north of the current ball fields, we would like to add two additional ball fields, and to the land, land to the west of our current ball fields, we would like to add additional parking. I've spoken with Archie Giddings about general plan going forward, and in this diagram that is in your packet is an overall view of the property and our existing fields and the American Legion field to the west of our fields, and there's a proposal to put in a drive to the west of the American Legion baseball field to get back and access the land behind that we're, you know, where we're currently using. So we want to utilize this drive to access the rear of the property, and I would like, you know, we would like to add additional parking back there, as, in addition to the parking that we already have adjacent to the road, and two ball fields that are proposed to the north, and that's approximately where we would like to put them. We would like to maintain some barriers for safety between the existing fields and the new fields for balls hit over the fence and whatnot, and, and we would like to probably move this area to the west, maybe, you know, like 50 feet to give us a buffer to the development happening on, on the east side of that property. But in general, this diagram represents where, what we want to do going forward, and I want to work with the planning commission to identify what we need to do. We need infrastructure, we need to bring in utilities to the new fields, and water, and electric, and, and phone, and a parking area. We would like to see it all paved, you know, eventually. Our current parking lot is gravel, you know, that, that could, we could, we've always wanted that to get paved, and what we'd like to do, in addition to what's proposed here, we would like to have fenced-in gated parking adjacent to the road where daytime users can come in and park there, use the facility, walk their dogs, and, and we can still say monitor the parking easily from, from the road, and, and, you know, police can drive by and, and easily recognize that things look in order. And that's basically our proposal, and it's, it's kind of in the early phases, but we need a solid plan so we can apply for grant money and funding to make this happen. And I just would like to get some feedback, you know, from a member in the planning commission or, or, you know, Archie or Public Works, and make sure our plan is solid when we go and apply for grant money. We see initially, we're just going to have to get, have a, have a nice plan drawn up before we cut down any trees, and, and start working to build the road first, you know, so we have access to that property and can get equipment back there to work on it. So that would be the first thing on our agenda is to have a planner, you know, draw up legitimate plans so we can start clearing and moving forward.
Okay. All right. At this point, then, if that's what you have, we'll open it up to public testimony, and then we'll come, bring it back up and see if the commissioners have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
The public comment portion of public hearing is now open for those, Resolution Serial Number 21-12. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, you have five minutes to provide your comments. Please write your name and contact information on the sign-up sheet, state your name for the record. You have five minutes to provide your comments.
Mr. Chair, just while you're waiting for, if there's someone's going to come forward and speak, I did want to go ahead and advise the commission that playfield, a ball field's considered a playfield, so even though it's a city property, it is, it does require use permit, which requires notification to the property owners within a 1,200-foot radius. It won't necessarily come to the planning commission unless there were some significant concerns raised, but there will be notification and a permit process that'll look at compatibility and appropriate buffering and all of that.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, uh, Planning Commission. Kirby Coleman here. Uh, I'm here in favor of this project. I hope maybe you guys could recommend with the city that, uh, you know, we're able to pass it, and really just looking out, um, if you guys see any opportunity to, to fund this project or any kind of fundraising abilities that you guys personally have, that would be awesome. Um, we actually, I've been out, playing out there for about five years. It's a great field, it's a great bunch of, uh, people that are out there, just enjoying the summer ball time. It's definitely a good, healthy, um, uh, way to get out and enjoy the summer, and, uh, yeah, we do need some more room. It's definitely something that, um, has been needed for some time. Some infrastructure, I mean, the sky's the limit, it really all boils down to funding, though, so I think our, our, we got our work cut out for us in, in terms of, uh, coming up with, you know, grants, things, source funding. We would like to partner with even our local, uh, softball, high school softball teams we're talking about, um, partnering with them, you know, ordering, pairing up, ordering some AstroTurf. So, we're just kind of in this, like you said, you know, the beginning planning stages of this thing. Um, but yeah, we're just seeking, you know, you guys' recommend, recommendation of, for approval, not only that, but also just, uh, willing to work with us in terms of when, when we do come before you guys with our final plans, and just, um, just, you know, having the heart to know that, uh, what we're doing is good for the community, it's good for, uh, everyone around the softball fields. I know a couple of people actually live adjacent to the softball fields, and it's just a great, uh, community-building aspect of, of the Matsu Borough here, so appreciate you, appreciate you guys' time, and, uh, with that said, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Matt Ketchum. I do not live in the city limits, uh, but I am in favor of this project, supporting that. I've actually played there since the mid-'90s, and it, uh, the facility has not changed much, and it's probably time to expand that. I think any development in this area of outdoor recreation, um, things like that for the community will be an asset to the city of Wassilla. Also, there's a, there's an economic impact that having an improved facility, softball facility, um, could bring for the tournaments and stuff that they do talk about. I'm also an American Legion baseball coach for Post 15 in Palmer, and I know that Post 35 that, um, has the American Legion Field there has had, um, lots of issues with vandalism and stuff, and certainly seems like there's some expansion that could be done in front of those facilities along the roadside for expanded parking that would also help out with, um, security for both the softball fields at Bumpus and also for the American Legion Field, so I'm for this project.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ketchum. Is there anybody else who would wish to speak? I'm just gonna close the, uh, public, uh, participation of the hearing, is now closed. Did the applicant have anything else to, uh, add?
I just think it's a great thing for the community, and we're, we're trying to keep up with, you know, new efforts. We've got to do this.
If, if you're gonna add, you gotta come up. A simple yes or no would have sufficed. (laughing). Name for the record.
My name's Greg DeArmond.
Thank you.
Director of Matsu Softball, and I appreciate Kirby and Matt coming up and speaking in support of this, uh, project, and, um, we have long-running relationship with the city of Wassilla. We're proud of what we do and the people we do it for, and, uh, as Matt has noted, um, it is a good financial benefit for the city, and it keeps people, uh, doing, uh, participating in healthy activity, and it encourages them to be a part of government and, you know, our, you know, overall community, so I just look and hope to see this, uh, plan get approved by the Planning Commission, and we can keep moving forward.
Alright. Do any of our Planning Commission members have any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Seigel, no questions.
Commissioner Seals, no questions at this time.
Commissioner Rubio, no questions.
I, I only have one question. Um, I think it was about 10 years ago, I lost part of my Achilles on one of the fields. Did you guys find it yet?
(laughing).
I don't believe we found that.
That was, that, yeah, that was my last game on that field, was Achilles tear.
Well, apparently, then you know some of the, well, benefits in...
Yes.
...playing ball, and it doesn't come without risks.
Yes, it does not. Alright, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, I look for a motion on this item?
Commissioner Seals, I make a motion to approve Wassilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number 21-12, a resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission supporting a recommendation by the Wassilla Parks and Recreation Commission, Reso 21-03, to the Wassilla City Council regarding development of two additional softball fields and additional parking by the Matsu Softball Association at the Bumpus Recreational Area located on Tax Parcel B5, Section 5 Township 17 North Range 1 West Seward Meridian.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Rubio, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Any discussion? Alright, hearing no discussion. Would the clerk please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Seigel?
Aye.
Commissioner Seals?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubio?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Aye. Wassilla Planning Commission approves Resolution Serial Number 21-12, a resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission supporting a recommendation by the Wassilla Parks and Recreation Commission, Resolution Number 21-03, to the Wassilla City Council regarding the development of two additional softball fields and additional parking by the Matsu Softball Association at the Bumpus Recreational Area located on Tax Parcel B5, Section 5 Township 17 North Range 1 West Seward Meridian. Mrs. Crawford, would you like to introduce item number four?
Um, sure. Item number four is Resolution Serial Number 21-13, a resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission adopted amended schedule of fees and list of review agencies for Wassilla Municipal Code Title 16 Land Development Code Applications, mending fees for mobile food vendors, temporary use permits, and other minor revisions and clarifications, and repealing the previous fee schedule, which was Resolution Serial Number 20-05. So, in your package on 213 is a strike through and underlined version of the fees. Again, they're just minor clarifications. The first one is adding manufactured homes, 'cause they are considered as a single family, but just for clarification, they would, we added that in. The number, what became number 10 down below was pulled out of what's on the next page, just for clarification, to call it out specifically. The fee didn't change or anything, it's just some reorganization for clarity. Then, the, um, downtown overlay, item G on page 214, just breaks out those types of permits for, um, required permits in the downtown. Looking for page 214.
It's right after 213.
Oh, yeah, but it's also before this packet, which I threw away.
So, the fees don't change for the downtown permits. Um, it just, again, breaks them out separately for clarity and for ease of understanding what the fees are. The, the first substantive change is H, it's mobile food vendors. When we first added this, we went with a $50 annual permit, um, based on the, the quickness of which we can review these permits, and we want to encourage mobile food vendors to come into the city. We're proposing it be reduced to $25 for an annual permit. That's in line with their business license permit. It still gets us to review them for safe locations and, you know, consistency with the code, but, um, it's not as onerous, and it's turned out that the review process is not that time-consuming. So, adjusting that one down. Same with the temporary use permit, which is item O on the list. Um, it was $50. The last time we amended it, I intended to reduce it to $25. This is for all of the special events that businesses have, they're outside, they're normal approved footprint. It could be anything, anything that's a special event. Um, it could be a market, it could be food truck event, it could be, um, anything. So, the code does require, if you're gonna have, it could be just temporary overflow parking. I know we have an auto business that, for tire changeover, needs a temporary parking lot. So, all of those type of temporary uses that are less than six months require a permit. Previously, it was 50. We're proposing that it go to 25, and that it be, um, free for nonprofit groups. Um, we've had quite a few, not recently, um, but Boy Scouts. When they're in front of Walmart, sitting out, outside of the Walmart premises, they need a permit. Well, it's hard to make any money, so Boy Scouts, you get paid $50 for your temporary use permit first. So, for nonprofits, we wanted to propose that they would be free, um, since it's serving a community purpose. So, that's really the only two changes, are to lower the fees for the food vendors, 50 to 25, the TUPs from 50 to 25, and free for nonprofit. The rest are just reorganization. That's all that I have.
Okay. Do any of the commission members have any questions for the planner?
Commissioner Rubio, not at this time.
Commissioner Seals, not at this time.
Commissioner Seigel, no questions at this time.
Okay, I have no questions. So, I'm, I'm assuming in this case that you are the applicant?
Correct.
Okay, alright, just making sure. Okay, is there any, uh, we're gonna open this up for public, the public portion, um, hearing is now open for Resolution Number, Serial Number 21-13. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Now, five minutes. Alright, seeing that there's no, um, one coming forward for public testimony, the public testimony is closed. I don't think we have anything else to address on this, so I will need a motion to either approve or deny Resolution Serial Number 21-13.
Commissioner Seals, I make a motion to approve Wassilla Planning Commission Resolution Number 21-13, a resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission adopting an amended schedule of fees and list of review agencies for Wassilla Municipal Code 16 Land Development Code Application, revising feeds, fees for mobile food vendors, temporary use permits, and other minor revisions and clarifications, and resili, and repealing WPC Resolution 20-05.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Seigel.
Commissioner Rubio, second. It's fine.
Alright, Commissioner Seigel, second it is, so is there any discussion on this matter? Nobody wants to raise everything double what the planner said? Change it to free?
Yeah, what business here?
Alright. No amendments, uh, then no discussion. Can I get a roll call vote, please, from the clerk?
Commissioner Seigel?
Aye.
Commissioner Seals?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubio?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Aye. Wassilla Planning Commission approves Resolution Serial Number 21-13, a resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission adopting amended schedule of fees and a list of preview agencies for Wassilla Municipal Code Title 16 Land Development Code Applications, revising fees for mobile food vendors, temporary use permits, and other minor revisions, clarifications, and repealing WPC Resolution Number 20-05. Alrighty. Mrs. Crawford, would you like to introduce item number five?
Certainly. Item number five is Resolution Number, Serial Number 21-14, a resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission recommending that the City Council amend Wassilla Municipal Code Section 16.04.070 definitions, to add definitions for ground cover, lawn, perennial flower, native vegetation existing, and landscape vegetation existing. Amend Section 16.24.040 parking to delete subsections 16.24.040 D4A through D4C. Amend Section 1633.030 exemptions, to clarify exemption and non-conferium provisions. Amend Section 16.33.060 types of landscaping, to add landscape provisions for industrially-zoned lots and other minor revisions. Amend Section 16.33.070 inspection, to require landscape architect inspection and certification for projects requiring use of a landscape architect. Amend Section 16.33.090 hardship waiver slash landscape waiver, to rename the section landscape waiver, and add language clarifying pre-application conference requirements and purpose, and amend Section 1.20.030 disposition of scheduled offenses, fine schedule, to add fines for landscape violations. So, what you have in your package, beginning on page 221 going through 265 in your package, is a strike through and underlined version of the current landscape regulations. What they can't contain are, um, all the discussions that the commission has had over the last five or six committees, the whole discussions, um, dealing with landscaping. The biggest, uh, addition to, or, I would say, the, the thing that you haven't seen is the fee schedule, so you'll wanna look at the fee schedule.
There's, there's a lot of additions.
Yeah.
There, there were some clarification additions, and then, um, so it was to address some of the comments that came out of the last discussion. The fee schedule is put in there. That has to do with the way that our fee schedule is. Currently, the court system requires that you specify, put a fee for every standard that's in your code, so that the citation is written against that specific standard versus just doing a generic violation of Title 16. So, this adds all of those called out, so you can look at those. The only, uh, the $300 is a standard land development code violation fee. The only one that has a higher fee is for uncommitted clearing within the shoreline protection area, and that just has to do with the nature and the value of that particular area within that shoreline, and the inability to mitigate those impacts in a shorter period of time it takes, and it's extensive time, and it can have significant damage on, um, the fish populations, the wildlife populations. It has a lot of ecological impacts, so it's a higher level, so that's why I proposed it at a higher fee. That's, um, certainly you can propose taking it to 300, 500, anywhere in between. 300's the standard, 1,000 is the maximum, just so that you know what those ranges are, so you'll wanna look at that. Um, added some, there were some additional definitions.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Thousands a maximum?
Yes.
I thought, uh, 5,000 for civil was maximum.
When we were doing the short-term rentals, I was advised that 1,000 was the maximum.
Okay, 'cause when I was on, was on, was on the state commission when we find people, we were 5,000 per fence.
I think it's because it's land use versus maybe something else.
City Attorney, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I would have to take a look. I'd like, that's something I can add to my list and take a look at that.
Just in case. I'm not, I'm not, um, suggesting you go to 5,000. Not my, my intent of that question.
So, there were a couple additional definitions. Again, all of them were added for clarity, so that when you're looking at the requirements of the code, and it references a specific type or a specific, um, item, you have a definition, go with them. So, there were a couple more that went in there. I know caliper is new. Lawn, I don't believe I had a definition, um, filled out. I had it indicated to have one. In working with a code compliance officer, we have a new officer, he's been looking through some of this code, some of these are a few suggestions, just from a compliance, the definitions, like what is a preserved tree, that kind of, the, the code talks about it, but there wasn't a definition, so there are a couple things in definition, like I said, there's some definitions that were added. Trying to look and see, the shoreline protection area, there was some language added there. Again, it's clarifying that they're not exempt. No, no property, regardless of the zoning, is exempt from the shoreline protection area. It was never intended to be that way, it was never done that way. There's a history all the way back to the '80s where people requested variances to the, the setback within the shoreline for clearing. It's always been implied to residential properties, but that's been, um, raised as an unclear portion of the code, so it calls it out into a separate section and, and kinda defines what the goal is and what you're looking for as far as revegetation, instead of just... you're looking for as far as revegetation, instead of just leaving it open-ended. Then we added a graphic on how to measure an evergreen tree. A little bit of reformatting, meaning it was one big paragraph, and I broke it into sub, sub bullets or sub items underneath it just for ease of reading it. Just running through real quick, I don't recall any other substantial changes, except for, again, for compliance. So, adding that section for compliance at the end of this.
What page?
It is, starts on page 261, and it identifies who's responsible, who can be cited, so it can be the property owner and/or the contractor. The code was silent, so the officer's like, well, who can I cite? I mean, so, again, calling out who you can cite, who's responsible. It's, it's my understanding that either can be cited. Oftentimes, it is both. It depends, again, on the severity of what's happening.
Does that include up in, including the architect?
No, 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 it would be the contractor, contractor doing the work on the site.
I.
Okay, alright, and it references the violations, and again, it calls out the specific things that constitute a violation. And again, that's to tie in with the fee schedule that the court requires, not, you know, so starting on the top of 262, you have one through six. It identifies what would be a violation of the landscape charter. Noncompliance with any of the requirements, noncompliance with conditions opposed, or imposed by the city planner or the planning commission, clearing without getting a permit, clearing within the shoreline. It just calls these out specific. It's 100% clear as to what the code actually said. So, and then, some of the sub, it's shown as underlined. It shows up as an underline even if you move it within the text, so like on page 263, you have number three, protection barrier, and number four, unpermitted clearing, number five, unpermitted clearing, and then tree removal and tree damage on the 262. But some of those, at least the tree removal, tree damage, and protection barriers were already in there, but they're stricken out of the section they're in and moved into a compiled list instead of being separated out. So, some of it's not really new language, it's just when you move it, it puts it as underlined, it strikes out where you moved it from. So, I'd be happy to, if you wanna go over line by line, we can do that. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to address them or go over, you know, why they change. You also have in your package the last version that we looked at in August. The one directly behind this, very on page 267, is actually a clean version, if you were so inclined to try and read it from beginning to end with all the changes incorporated. Page 307, starting there, is the code as it's adopted today. After that, like I said, was the version that came to the planning commission in August. So, you had all of that, and so it would've shown you the difference between those, you would've had this one and that one. So, starting on page 331 was the last version that you looked at.
Commissioner Bushnell here. I had a, well, actually, sorry. Before we get into questions, is that, is that it for the?
That's it.
That's it for the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Gotta do things right here. Alright. The public comment portion of the hearing is now open for Resolution Serial Number 21-14. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, we have five minutes to provide your comments. If you've already signed in, you don't need to re-sign in, just please state your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Matt Ketchum, and I own a business in Wassilla. I do not live in the city limits, though, however. I have a business that's located in the city limits, and it is zoned industrial, and I'm, I'm simply here to give my thoughts on, on landscaping. And just hearing some of the few comments there, what the resolution is, I guess I would, I would caution the use of must-use a landscape architect. I think it's, I think it may be necessary for some people. I think it, it's not necessary for others. Some have the expertise to figure it out, but, I mean, I think it could be encouraged, but maybe not required. When you guys start requiring things of people developing in the city limits, it, it would simply drive up costs, and some people can mitigate those by doing them themselves if there's a certain standard to be met. I would discourage you guys from requiring the use of a landscape architect. If somebody, if a landscape architect wants to come into town, set up shop, and start promoting his business to develop your land more, more prudently or properly, or to increase more value, then, then so be it, but I don't, I don't think the city should be requiring it, particularly on, on industrial sites. I'd also like to encourage you guys to look at other options of landscaping. I think people, when they think of landscaping, they simply think of bushes and trees and, and bark mulch, rather than, than rocks and things that don't blow away in the wind, and, and maybe lawn and turf. Those are, those are great ways to landscape and have an attractive-looking facility, whether it's industrial or commercial or anything like that. So, I think there's a natural resource that we have in the valley with rocks that, that are beautiful when they're, when they're used properly and placed, and they're safe and they're easy to maintain. The more stuff that you guys require to be built, it's gotta be maintained, and so always keep maintenance in mind with, when you're talking about requiring something, so. I was working for a contractor about 10 years ago, and we got a contract to redo Wassilla High Parking Lot to move the rounded parking lot that, or used to be a little roundabout cul-de-sac in front of the school there, and one of the things that the landscape architect required in there was bark mulch over all of those planners. That next winter, there was about a three-foot berm of bark mulch right in front of the front door because the wind blows, and gravel works a heck of a lot better than the gravel, than the bark mulch for blowing around, so I know that, that bark mulch has some, some holding moisture components to it, but there's other ways to, to figure that out, too. As far as landscaping goes, it's, it's not always just trees and bushes. There are other ways to do it, keeping maintenance in mind. I'm in the process of developing the industrial site that I'm, have a permit on to extract gravel, and so I'm somewhat interested in this for in the future, but that's my public comment on that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and express their point of view?
This is Tim Alley with the BTA Company. I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate what, what Matt said as far as adding cost. Landscaping in particular is something that I am very routinely talking to developers for, about, when they're trying to develop within the city limits, and quite honestly, they're starting to see it worse than Anchorage, which I don't know that, at least, I guess I'll reiterate, I don't live in the city, city limits, but I do work within the city limits, our office is in the city limits, and I know from my standpoint out here, like, if I wanted to live in Anchorage, I'd live in Anchorage. So, anyway, that being said, that has definitely started to become a sore subject for a lot of developers, and also the, the bark mulch that, that he was talking about as well. There's definitely some easier ways to ma, easier ground cover to use that are, that's easier to maintain, reduces costs for developers, doesn't necessarily attract, distract from the, detract from the landscaping. That's kind of a, I guess, a subjective position there, but again, just, just wanted to caution adding costs to landscaping at this point, if you guys are trying to keep development moving forward, it's definitely something that's on, on developers' minds.
Alright, thank you, sir. Here's, that is the end of our public comment portion. Is that correct? Alright. Does the commission have any questions for Mrs. Crawford on other details within this?
Can I get rebuttal?
Yeah, you do. You can get some rebuttal. Go ahead, go for it.
I'm just kidding. I'm technically the app. No, actually, I just wanted to say for the commission and for the two gentlemen who testified, this particular document proposes the very changes that they're asking for. So, it, the only clarification I'll say is for the landscape architect, it used to say for buildings with 5,000 square feet of gross floor area, 5,000 or more, or a lot size greater than one acre. We had small buildings going on large lots, and they were getting caught, so this strikes that requirement about the one acre, so it's only buildings over 5,000 square feet that require a landscape architect. Everything else can be done by a civil, by the individual, by an architect, whoever they want to have do that. So, this does do that. For ground cover and mulch, on page 236, it lists a whole bunch of alternatives. It has anything that's similar in appearance to mulch, evergreen ground cover, low-lying perennial plants, perennial ornamental grasses, and other similar plants. So, there's options to fill it up with that kind of vegetation that just comes back naturally every year without having to put that requirement for mulch. There's also a grass component for industrial zone lots. Depends on your road frontage, but grass can be used within those beds, and you would just have the area cleared out for the actual tree surrounded by grass. So, there are options included in this plan. So, a lot of this document was identifying the desire to reduce some of the requirements on industrial zone lots and look at, were there some other ways? We reduced the number of perennial flowers that are required. This proposes it go from 16 to 9. It lowers the height requirement for parking islands, but not for perimeter, so there's some combination, you know, some modifications. So, a lot of this is actually toning it down versus ramping it up. So, it's looking for alternatives, cost-saving alternatives, that still accomplish that same purpose. So, hopefully, that will work out with the projects, and if we find in a few years that there's still something else, we can always readdress it.
We'll be back at this next month. Alright. Commissioner Crawford, Crawford, or City Planner Crawford, I have a question, I've got a couple of questions, but unfortunately, I left my notes either in my car or my office, I'm not sure which, I only brought half of them, and actually, this is like a third, and all the others were on the other page. But there was an inconsistency. I noticed that we lowered the, lowered the tree height from 10 feet to eight feet, and con evergreens to six feet.
Certain areas.
Certain areas, but then there was one where the trees jumped back up to 10 feet, and now I can't.
It's probably the screening and buffering. So, I added a height for screening and buffering for those size. I think that's what you're thinking of.
Right, and the, and the idea that I'm thinking of is if we're planting trees, we should keep it consistent, because one of the, one of the reasons for bringing it down from 10 feet to eight feet was the, the cost of trying to find that mature tree, and I know the other side of the conversation was, of course, the growth factor, but if you take a bigger, that's why, and I just found that as an inconsistency. It's like, okay, I understand the buffering, but now we're jumping that size back up, or keeping the size higher instead of keeping it consistent, and I couldn't find it again. I remembered seeing it, and I, I highlighted it on my computer, and then I went on to the next one.
It says, it's on page 255, line 672 through 675. It refers you back to the previous section.
It was, it was, yeah, it was, it was more towards the beginning of the packet. I remembered that, 'cause it was after my first edit and then into.
Now, the reason that it was different for perimeter, perimeter, again, is that, that exterior of the site that really gives you that visual appearance to the community, it's what people see when they come into community, it's that exterior, so that's where the height was left at 10. But all the interior landscaping could be eight, because that, again, that doesn't create your first impression of your city, that's not your, your most aesthetic impact is received at that perimeter landscape bed versus the interior. The interior, they'll have time for the trees to grow up in height, and so they are eight feet, and then I'm trying to find that section about the...
There was a section about the shrubs. There was a...
Yeah, it's 18 inches interior and 24 exterior.
And then you went to 30 on parking lot.
That's for hedges. That's already in the code today.
I understand.
Yeah.
I, I understand, but it's shrub is a shrub is a shrub. So, we went from 20, we went from, we had the 24-inch shrubs, and then now we have 30-inch shrubs that only grow to 36.
But it's the purpose of the shrub.
I know, I understand, but we're asking them to put a mature, and that was one of, that's why I'm asking. That was one of the comments from the landscape architect, was the bigger, the bigger the plant that they have to go buy, the more expensive it is, and so that was my question. If we're, if we're doing 24s on the perimeter, but then we're gonna do a buffer with a shrub at the parking lot edge, what's the difference?
Okay, so, the code, not all parking butts up to the property line.
Correct.
Often does, but it doesn't always. I've run into that over the last couple years since it's got adopted and had to deal with that, and this gives that distance measurement of when you have to do it. The code has a requirement for perimeter for aesthetics. The code has a requirement to screen and buffer your parking lot to create a visual barrier to block that sea of asphalt and that, that sea of cars, and so the spacing for the shrubs in your perimeter, perimeter is not sufficient to do that. So, there's, and again, not all parking that's visible, and it's only for the parking that's visible from the right-of-way. It could be on the side, it could be in the front, it could be set back 25 feet. It's that require, it's meeting that requirement of what the purpose and intent of the landscape code is for screening and buffering your parking lots.
I understand, I understand that.
So, I mean, you could change it, you can. It's, it's just choosing to be willing to wait to achieve the purpose or to...
We're, yeah, we're talking, talking, talking about six inches, we're, the six inches on a plant, and, and one of the comments early on was about how hard it is to get those bigger, those bigger plants, and, and that's why I was, I was, I'm asking the question is, now we're, we're bumping it back up, or we're, or we're keeping it the same, we're not, we're not bumping it up, we're keeping it the same. So...
I hear the conversation, I've heard people say they're hard to find. I don't know what the answer is. I can tell you that when I see AutoZone go in, not AutoZone, but McDonald's did their rebuild, when First National Bank did their parking lot, they didn't come to me and say it was hard to find the plant sizes, and they, they had them. There's a lot of developments that never raised as an issue, found the plant sizes, and they complied.
Well, comments from First National is, they hate our landscaping plan.
Well, they do, 'cause it costs money, but, but they could find the plants. It wasn't based on availability, it was a cost thing, so certainly, yeah.
Correct, it's a cost thing, and, and that's one of the, that's one of the things we wanted to look at, is making sure that, that we do this, and, and I think going to the 5,000 square feet versus the acre is definitely gonna help many people in, in this, so that was, I had that question. The other question I have is, it's page 550, I think, 552, it was the 25 of 45 in the packet, and it's talking about the number of parking spaces. Well, sorry, it's got, it's got a number, it's got a number on the packet.
So, it has to do with what?
It was, let's see, would be 25 of 45.
Was it 252?
246. So, 246, it starts parking lot interior, calculation of the total parking lot area, includes the area for parking spaces, drive aisles, between parking rows, termination, and entrance, drive aisles. And I had a couple things on this one that I, I had questions about, why we were including, so the required interior landscaping, I just wanted to have you clarify this, because for zero to four parking spots, 5% of the total parking area, so I did a quick calculation of how big a parking lot, or big parking spot is, and so we're gonna require a 35-square-foot landscaping for an interior parking, and I wanted to ask you how that, how that was gonna work, and it just seemed like, for the small spots, it didn't, it seemed like, okay, let's just get rid of that, as a cost savings to a developer, but then, when you have the multiple parking spots, like you've talked about, and you get that sea of asphalt, yeah, we're gonna ask for more. So, can you clarify that for me, or am I missing something?
Well, the 5% of the total area is not just the parking spaces themselves, it's also, so if you had four, you would have to have a driveway that's 25 feet wide. It'd be that 25-foot drive aisle in front of those four parking spaces, and then 5% of that.
Okay.
I don't know what that would calculate out to.
Okay, and then there was another... And then there was another part of it. It said that you calculated that and you also included the space of landscaping in the calculation? So, that the land, like the end stops of the parking spaces would count towards the total square footage? That seems to be double dipping into the square footage.
So, and that's a meaning, it's intended that everything that's interior that addresses your parking lot goes toward the 5, 10, or 15%, whatever it is that, that you're required to have. It's not supposed to be this plus this plus another 10 plus another 15. Just like all of this parking lot interior counts toward your overall 15% of your lot.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
You are, I just, I, I just.
So, it was intended to.
I'm just looking for the little, I'm looking for the little things that we can try to.
This was intended to save because now this and this and this all add up toward that total 5, 10, or 15% you have to have.
Okay.
So, and then the reason that the language is there in 245, or at least the goal of it, maybe it doesn't accomplish that. The goal was to call out that the entrance drive aisles and the drive aisles around the perimeter aren't part of that calculation. That's the way I've been applying all this time. But the landscape architects and people drawing these, doing these calculations have asked, did you please put that in the code so we know we don't have to include that? So, again, that was reducing the amount that they have to do. You could have interpreted it the other way and said, no, it's all still part of your.
Okay.
Sea of asphalt. But it seemed reasonable to just focus on the actual parking lot portion.
Okay. So, and just before that, on the, on page 245, there's a, number six, continuous parking stalls. Each row must contain 15 or less continuous stalls without interruption to landscape area. That's concurrent code. If any of the following condition exists, no more than 12 continuous stalls may be provided. The total number of onsite parking exceeds 50. Okay? That number, I, I believe needs to be changed and I'll explain why. It doesn't match with the 12 or the 15. Okay? If we use 60 or if we use 45 as the barrier, then we don't jump to having to go to 12. But if you go over 50, now you got to go over 12 and you don't have even numbers. Whereas if I'm at 45, I've got three 15-row parking spots. But if I'm at 50, I've got three plus five. The number, I don't get a complete row. Whereas if I, if I would make that number 60, I get four 15-row parking spaces. Or if we go to 45, I get three and then everything above that. It's the, the extra five for the 15 number, which seem nice and round, just doesn't make sense in my mind. Can you explain, can you explain? Am I, am I wrong in my thinking on this or what am I missing?
Based on the layout of the site, the topography of the site, people aren't always able to optimize a full run of 12 and 12 even. But they, or 15 and 15. They may be 15, they have to draw up a landscape island and then they only get four more. That's just the way it is because maybe there's a hill here and they can only squeeze in a couple more. I haven't seen what you're talking about, that mathematical precision. Some do. Some are larger sites, probably larger sites do. The smaller ones end up with these odd mixes of fives and fours and threes. And that's a choice that they do when their design comes in. But certainly, yeah, I mean, if you, you would go with either, what, 45 or 60 under V1?
I'd like to see 60 because it matches the, it would match a fourth row instead of a partial row. Instead of taking something away, we add a little bit. Okay.
Commissioner Rubio, can I speak?
Yeah, anytime.
Sorry, what was that?
Anytime.
Um, so I was, I was trying to think about, I think it was July when I had asked if we ever did a public outreach to find like four or six private industry members to come up and help us with this because obviously, we're not engineers, landscape architects, or landscapers, or developers at this point. And I didn't know whether that was headed or if we ever got a motion to get that going to see what we could come up with.
Commissioner Rubio, we, we actually did. We did, in the beginning of the packet, actually, there's a, a note, where is it? Here it is. On the new business for public hearing item number five, the comments and recommendations, they were able to get comments and recommendations from the Corvus Design Huddle, Dubitay Company, Sustainable Design Group, and H5 Construction. They solicited comments from the Anchorage and Wassilla Home Builders Association and several other different organizations. And I know I myself have talked to several different contractors and things like that. Unfortunately, I, I, I get a generic response, a lot of times not a specific response. At least personally.
Mr. Chair, we did, all of the licensed architects that are, have license, business licenses in the city, we did notify them to, I'm not sure if we included the ones from Anchorage, but any who have done business in the city were included in that notification.
Okay.
Soliciting comments from them.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Do any of the other commission members have? I'll try to remember all my comments because I'm missing the page that I was looking for. But I think I've got most of the ones that I had, had popped out at me.
My good question was about the landscape architect. But then the change from one acre to the 5,000 pretty much answered that question.
And I believe, Mrs. Crawford, could you confirm this? I believe that the language, specific language in there states that a landscape architect will be required or, and somebody of similar experience can be used with your approval.
That language is in there, that is correct.
Okay.
But I will, just for, for full disclosure, I will say that I've only had one person ask for that and they had only done a few landscape plans. Most of them were for very small, like 1,200, 2,000-square-foot developments versus any larger. And they had only done it over, they may have done it over a range of 15 years, but there were probably only like four projects. So, they weren't deemed qualified because what I looked at was the education that's required for a landscape architect plus the, the time that they have to do to be licensed. And they should at least have close to that education requirement and have done some substantial plans. But I've only had one ask and that was about three, four years ago, right after this got added in there. And like I said, they, it was, I wanted to be able to approve them, but they really just didn't have the experience dealing with.
Landscapers haven't come forward? And said that they can present the plan?
No one's asked.
And I couldn't, and I couldn't get a landscaper to come testify here. They would not, they didn't want to come to the city.
If one had come in and they have 15 years' experience drawing up plans, you know, even if it's residential or whatever, then I would definitely look at that and, you know, consider that. But no one's asked.
Okay. All right. That help, Mr. Seals?
It helps.
Okay. So, I am, we're, we're in discussion on this, but we don't have a motion to approve. But I'll, I'm going to put this out to the commission. It's 8:16 right now. I, I looked through it, I read through everything, all, everything through here. I do not know if I am ready to push this thing forward without further review of myself to make sure that everything is in there and any little things that I would like to modify. Is there, are other members of the commission leaning in favor of moving this forward tonight? I know the city council would like to see it, but I don't know if, if, is everybody comfortable with us in here? Have you reviewed it thoroughly enough and are you okay with it? Or are you okay to go through and make the modifications that we need to do tonight? And I guess the answer to that is if you feel confident, make a motion and we'll go from there.
Commissioner Sejal, I hate to kick the can down the road, but I'd like some more time to review it. And if possible, maybe, I don't know, would it still be appropriate to ask for more comments from?
Yes, yes. Commission.
Because what I hate to do is have this go through and then people start complaining. I mean, even though they've had the opportunity, but.
The city attorney, can I ask you a question, please? City attorney? Is the city attorney.
Sorry, I, I, yeah, I had to get to the button on my phone. I couldn't find the button on my phone.
You're watching the football game, aren't you?
No, I just don't want my, my, the kids here to bother the commission, so.
I understand. I have a question on procedure. So, we have a, we have a resolution in front of us. If it was the will of the commission to table this, is the proper etiquette or proper procedure to make a motion to approve and then table? Or to table now to the next meeting?
I, I, I think it would make more sense to table it now. I'm not sure what the practice has been in the past. This is the first instance of a code review for me with, with Wassilla. So, Tina may be able to speak to what the procedure has been in the past.
What we've done in the past is not done a motion, just had a, meaning not a motion to adopt, just a motion to continue the item to a date certain.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to go to the November meeting, it would be November 9th. You could make a motion to continue this item to November 9th and that you would, you know, and then we would add it back on and you could allow additional public input and testimony on it.
And further time for us to review it in, in, in length, yeah.
Or if you thought you needed more time, you would need to wait till January because I will not be available for the December meeting unless you want to work with Alvin.
Hey, it's, that's my birthday month, so I got 30 days to celebrate.
So, you would just make a motion to continue this item, item number five on the agenda.
Okay.
New business to the November 9th meeting.
Okay.
And to allow, and I would just clarify, and to allow additional public input and testimony at that meeting.
Okay. Commissioners, I will leave this to you as which motion you wish to do. If you wish to enter into a full discussion of this in motion to approve, then that would be the motion I would like to see. If you would like to table this to the next meeting, then a motion of moving item number five to the November 9th meeting to open it up for further public comment would be the type of motion I'd like to see.
That's.
Commissioner Sejal, make a motion, we table item number five to the November 9th meeting and open it up for additional public comment.
Commissioner Seals, I second.
All right. Discussion. Commissioner Rubio, are you in agreements? Are you okay with this? Any?
I am definitely okay with it moving to November. And just wondering if we can even ask the staff, you know, city director to do another conduct of public outreach to, to help us find people that will come in and talk about this.
Okay. Maybe I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to add in there that we request the city staff maybe include something on this on our, on their Facebook page? If I could get a second?
Commissioner Rubio, I second that, for sure.
Is there any opposed to that amendment? Hearing none, the amendment, the motion is amended. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, can you take a?
You didn't vote on the first motion to approve it first before you do amendment.
We didn't vote on the first motion yet.
I know, you can't amend it yet.
We can't vote on it either. You can't vote on it, you have to amend first.
Right, but the person that did the main motion needs to amend it, not you.
Okay. Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, amend your motion to include, was it staff work and?
Uh, motion, amendment to the motion to request staff add outreach onto the Facebook page for this item.
All right. Yes, amend the motion to include the staff work and additional outreach on the Facebook page.
I second.
All right. Is there anybody opposed to that motion or that amendment to the motion? All right. Hearing none, that amendment passes. And now can I have the clerk do a roll call vote on the amended motion?
Um, Commissioner Sejal.
Aye.
Commissioner Seals?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubio?
Aye.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Aye. The motion to move item number five to the November 9th meeting as amended is approved. Unfinished business, there's no unfinished business. We'll move on to communications. Is everybody taking a look at the communication, communication log? All right. Is there any, oh, one last call for audience comments? If you'd like to step forward, talk about anything that was discussed this evening or was not discussed this evening or any feedback. If you have feedback, you have 30 seconds. If you have anything to talk about, you've got three minutes.
Matt Ketchum, can we get a copy of the packet that you guys got regarding that? Is it on the wall? Thank you, sir. All right. Staff members, do you have any comments? Commission members, any comments?
I forgot the city attorney.
Oh, city attorney? Do you have any comments? Apparently, the city attorney does not have any comments. Commission members? Do you have any comments?
Commissioner Seals, no comments at this time.
Commissioner Sejal, no comments.
Commissioner Rubio, no comment.
The city attorney has no comments other than I can't understand my phone, so I apologize.
We'll just, we just added some words for you, you're good. Commissioner Bushnell, I have a, I have a couple of comments real quick. One of the things, and I guess it would have been new business, we didn't touch it. But back to Principal Marvel's discussion about changing to Warrior Way. Is that something that we would do a resolution as the planning commission to the public works or to the city council? Or what is the process on that?
Yeah, the, the city council has authority to change the street name.
Okay. So, would we do a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, if I'm not out of line, I'd like to make a motion that to have staff prepare a resolution in support of this for the November 9th meeting.
Commissioner Rubio, second that.
Any discuss? We. Is there a consensus from the commission on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, cool. Okay. And then, on that same note, I'd like to bring up the fact that when they did the new street signs, the Snyder Crossing has insulted our family by misspelling the name of my great-grandfather who donated the airport to the city, which is now Wonderland Park, and donated the first school to the Wassilla School that was ever here back in whenever it was, the first building. And they can't spell his name right. So, it's now spelled Snyder with a Y instead of Snyder with an I. And even Google now has it wrong. So, we need to get that corrected.
I want to change the sign.
Okay. I was gonna, I was gonna take the old one that was laying on the road and just take it, undo it and put it back up, but I was afraid somebody might see me and rat me out.
Send a bill to the O.T.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all, that's all I had. Oh, one last thing. I would like to thank everybody for your participation in this. And I know we're, we're pushing this final number five down the road, but after reading through it, going through everything, I don't know if I was quite ready to push this, push it on. So.
I was not ready.
Okay. So, on that, it is 8:27 and we are adjourned.
Michael Schwartz.
Has left.